Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to today's special city council meeting. We're certainly pleased to have everybody in attendance today. Today is Thursday, July 25th, and we start every city council meeting by introducing you to your city council.
Council members Aguilar?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Entiman?
Here.
Urbanbach?
Here.
Jamison?
Here.
Karski?
Rolfing?
Here.
Staggers?
Present.
Thank you. In the city of Sioux Falls, we start our city council meetings with an invocation, with a prayer. And today, we are incredibly blessed to have the senior pastor from the multicultural community church here in Sioux Falls, Senior Pastor Henry Seer. And Pastor Seer will lead us in prayer. We'd ask you to stand, and then, after the pastor is done, we will recite our pledge of allegiance. Senior Pastor Seer, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I bring you greetings from my family and from the multicultural community church where I serve as the pastor. I also bring you greeting from the First Baptist Church, where we worship and where I also serve as part-time. Today, I'll be reading for you from the scripture, Proverbs 27, 23 through 24. Be diligent to know the state of your flocks and attend to your herds, for riches are not forever, nor do the crown endure to all generations. We are commanded at the scripture to be diligent, to know the condition of the residents, and to be able to attend and pay attention to their needs. That means we are to manage the resources. It is stated emphatically on the website of this city that we are solid financially, ensuring that we can be solid if and only if we manage this budget. That will be presented by our humble servant, Mayor Maheson. Because we are cautioned that riches are not forever. So the budget is the projection to enable us to know what is necessary and to be careful what our expenditures would be. Someone rightly said, "The budget enables us to know when to go to the restaurant and eat and to know when to stay home and cook soup for the family." Therefore, the budget enables us to prioritize what is necessary for the city of Sioux Falls. As a minister of the gospel, and I want to encourage every minister to join me to pray for the successful implementation of this budget. Shall we pray? Lord, we gather here today for the presentation of the budget for 2014. The budgetary allocation of the city of Sioux Falls. We do not want to make the mistake of leaving you out of the gathering. Therefore, we invite your presence in our midst. Lord, God, your presence will be felt today. Lord, just as Moses appealed to you never to leave the children of Israel, we also want to plead with you, God, that you will bless this assembly. Lord, we want to present to you the budget of 2014, that you will be the supervisor, the director, the captain that will lead this budget. Lord, we need your guardians because we are humans and we can fail. So we pray for your wisdom, that this budgetary allotment will be used according to your glory, and we will experience that financial solidarity that is projected by the developers of this budget. In this regard, we want to present the leaders of the city into your hands. We pray, Lord, that your blessing will be upon them, especially Mayor Maheson, that you will help him and his family as they lead this noble city to perpetual financial stability. We pray also for all council members and the family, that you will give them the guardians as the leaders of the city. We present to you, Lord, the commissioners and the committees of the city government, by and large, every department that you will give them the wisdom in the operational aspect of the budget. Lord, we pray that this budget will not only show the financial solennet of the city, but that the sense of appreciation for your love to serve you, that your kingdom will be felt in the city. Therefore, I present the rest of this occasion into your hands, God, that your glory will be done, and the residents of Sioux Falls will enjoy your peace, by and large, South Dakota, in Jesus' name I pray.
(Inaudible)
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you much. Council chair, and I'm in, City Council, people of Sioux Falls and employees of the city of Sioux Falls. I thank you for this opportunity to engage you today. As public servants, I believe that the citizens we serve, they need to be our sounding board, the ultimate decision-makers, and, yes, the link in determining our town's priorities. With that in mind, let's reflect on what they are relaying to us. First of all, the people of this town, they're bursting with confidence, and they certainly value the employees of Sioux Falls City Government. As I go through the slides, over the next couple of slides, I think you're going to find that the people of Sioux Falls are quite pleased. In fact, eighty percent of them recently rated the quality of the city's services as good or excellent. You're also going to find in the slides to come that the highest ratings that the employees of our town have ever received. Seventy-seven percent believe that they have a good or an excellent impression of these eleven hundred city employees. Eighty-two percent of them think that the knowledge of these employees is good or excellent. Seventy-seven percent believe that the responsiveness of the city team is good or excellent. And seventy-five percent of them believe that the courtesy of the city team is good or excellent. This town appreciates this team. The team's doing well. Sixty-seven percent believe that the value of the services for the taxes that they pay is also good or excellent. It's the highest rating this town has received. And I'll tell you, it is much above the peers and the national benchmarks around the country. Our citizens approve where we're at today, but, all of you know, we can do even better. This town, the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, is the envy of many, but I do need to step back. Not everybody is doing as well as our town. Last night, I was at home, and I read the Yankton Daily Press in Dakotin. I'm going to read just a snippet of an editorial in last night's edition. It's titled, "Detroit's Fall Serves as a Lesson." The economic fall of Detroit is a result of a perfect storm of bad debts, bad government, and bad management. Thus, the city has ended up precisely where it deserves to be, such as the price that is paid when you have eighteen billion dollars in accrued financial obligations, a shrinking tax base, and, through it all, a greater desire to watch your own back and blame others than to bluntly address the issue. The storyline in Sioux Falls is much different. In fact, the National Journal just titled Sioux Falls as America's Next Boom Town. Our population is growing steadily. Our debt level is very, very manageable. We don't borrow money in our town to fund operations. Our unemployment rate is the lowest in years, at 3.3 percent. Our tax base is growing, and, as I'll talk about later, construction activity in our town is setting new highs. What makes our town different? What makes Sioux Falls different? It's our people. They are resourceful, they're responsible, and, yes, they are confident. And you've heard me say this before, to me, it's all about confidence. This town, this city, Sioux Falls, is thriving. Businesses are expanding, they're moving to town, people are finding good jobs, we're improving their quality of life, and this infrastructure that is so important to all of us, it is solid, and we're staying one step ahead of the growth. More folks are working in our town than they ever have before. In fact, three thousand eight hundred eighty-five more people are working in Sioux Falls than they were one year ago today. Eight thousand four hundred and sixty more people are working in our town than they were three years ago. This town wanted good jobs, well, you're getting them. Two thousand and thirteen is going to be a record-breaker. When it comes to construction activity in our town, the odds are incredibly good that we will break a construction record. In fact, look at the chart. Look at the chart. The two thousand and thirteen number, that purple number that you see, that's only through June. That's only through June. June of two thousand and thirteen surpasses all of two thousand and nine, surpasses all of two thousand and ten, and already surpasses all of two thousand and eleven. The odds are good. They're really good, that we will set a construction record for the city of Sioux Falls. Sales tax revenue. What funds government? How's that doing? Well, it's doing well. The growth last year was solid, and we expect the growth to be even better in two thousand and thirteen. In fact, year-to-date, two thousand and thirteen sales tax growth is at eight percent. The people of Sioux Falls and the people of South Dakota and the people of this area, they are indeed confident. With confident comes a willingness to spend, and Sioux Falls is reaping the reward of that confidence. This city's government is different as well. You know, first of all, we tackle tough issues head-on. For example, the pension reform topic, that will generate three hundred million dollars in savings over the next thirty years. And as of July 1st, two thousand and thirteen, new employees to the city of Sioux Falls, they are now in the South Dakota retirement system. It was not an easy topic to tackle, but we tackled it, and I'm proud of the employees because of that. Like our citizens, we believe that being fiscally responsible and living within our means is critical. Our budget is balanced. And the future is important. Part of that is saving for that rainy day. I want to give you a little glimpse. Over the past three years, we've added money to our city's piggy bank. Two thousand and ten, we added six hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand and eleven, one point seven million dollars. And in two thousand and twelve, we added even more money to our piggy bank in the amount of one point eight million dollars. The slide above you, six simple words. Sioux Falls balances progress with prudence. However, they relay a simple but powerful roadmap towards success. You know, when the team sat down to focus on the budget, we follow a process. We've spent countless hours on the budget before you today, and I'm incredibly proud of it. I'm proud of the city team that helped us develop it, and their work shines brightly, and you're going to see it today. We listen to the people, we listen to the employees, we set priorities, and we worked as a team, and I love the way this team is working when it comes to managing the finances of this town. There are four priorities or goals that we strongly feel that we did capture with this two thousand and fourteen. We want to maintain the financial strength of our city. We want to stay one step ahead of the growth. We want to enhance the quality of life of the people that we serve. And, yes, we want to squeeze even more value out of that taxpayer dollar. And these are hard-earned taxpayer dollars. We need to get the biggest bang for their sweat, their pain, and the sacrifice that went in to earning these dollars. We're going to maintain the financial strength of this town. We're projecting to finish two thousand and thirteen very, very strong, with at least a thirty percent reserve level. And in two thousand and fourteen, we believe that we'll also maintain a thirty percent reserve level, which is above our city goal of twenty-five percent. Once again, folks, we've added four point one million dollars to our city's piggy bank over the last three years. We are going to need to stay ahead of growth. The town is growing. It is. To do that, we are going to have to grow the team that is there to service it as well. We are going to be adding eighteen new full-time employees to our team. Part of that involves, of course, public safety. Four new police officers, an animal control officer, a fire inspector will help us keep this town safe. We need to keep Sioux Falls moving, too. It's a big, big deal. To do that, we're going to hire a traffic engineer, we're going to focus on street expansions such as Forty-first Street from Suratoma to the T.L.S. Road. Intersection improvements, you know they're critical. One of the biggies will be Tenth and Sycamore, and, yes, traffic signal improvements at Eighty-Fifth and Minnesota, Forty-first and Southeastern, Forty-Ninth and Solberg. We will make improvements that will keep Sioux Falls moving strong. And, yes, the city council, they wanted the city government team to bring forth a plan, a long-term, comprehensive plan involving public transportation. We're going to provide it to you, council. However, I need to let you know that this challenge is not going to be an easy one to overcome. It will require big-time sacrifice, some common ground, and some leadership. We did it with pension reform, and I know that we can do it with public transportation as well. It's going to be a hard pill to swallow. You're going to have to reduce some of the non-core services. We're going to have to talk about increasing fares. But if we do that, we can provide even better service, even more enhanced routes for the people that are so in demand of this public transportation that we know is so critical. Enhancing the quality of life is a big deal for the people in our town. They like what we're doing, but they are hungry for even more. The two thousand and fourteen budget will have the funds to fully roll out snowgates for our town. You know, council, they told me they wanted snowgates when I was running for mayor, and the message is even more powerful now that we are, as we are testing them right now. Of course, we keep talking about parks and recreation and those opportunities, and the bike trail, you'll see that in the budget, things like Prairie West Library, which we're so proud of and will need to staff and make good things happen there. But we also need to add value to the services. We're going to do some things that are kind of out of the box a little bit, and I think you're going to appreciate it. First of all, public health, we're going to try to do things differently here. We're going to change the business model and community health to increase access and accountability in providing this community health that we know is so critical. We're going to transition a portion of the contracted medical services and make them city employees. Five positions to, again, increase access to health services, improve patient-centered care delivery, and strategically position community health as part of the Affordable Care Act, and to make sure that we can handle those changes as they're coming. We also want to handle fleet differently. Today, we've got different teams that are managing their fleet services. It just doesn't make good, common, or business senses as we do that. For example, planning and building services, our police team, we're going to have them focus on what they do best, and we're going to encourage them to get out of the vehicle maintenance and repair business. And, yes, there's a group of people in our town that are responsible for providing service, this incredible service level. There are eleven hundred and ten city employees. We are in the service business. Our citizens, our employees, which are also citizens of this town, they're on the front lines, they're responsible for meeting the expectations of this town, and we need to take care of them. These employees are making good things happen here in Sioux Falls. Eleven hundred and forty strong. What we're trying to do is, we're truly trying to provide them with competitive pay, with very, very solid benefits. Council, I can't tell you exactly everything to date because it's not been inked and stone yet, but I can tell you that the negotiations with the three unions, they've been very, very professional and very, very productive. We continue to improve the working conditions, especially in our city hall, and need to let you know that, yes, there's a good chance that in two thousand and fourteen, we're going to have some folks retire. We are. They're going to take advantage of some of the things that we just implemented here with our pension reform plan. When those openings occur, we know that the demand for those jobs will be incredibly high. We're going to thank the people as they leave, but we're going to welcome good people to the team as well. Because, again, remember, working together, there's nothing that this council, nothing that this city team can accomplish, nothing. Let's get to the nitty-gritty of some of the numbers within the budget. First of all, this is a pretty grand budget, Sioux Falls. It's one of the largest that we've had. However, we will be able to live well within our means with this budget. In two thousand and nine, you'll see that it was larger than the one that we're proposing in fourteen, but also, council, remember, in two thousand and nine, it was thirty-two million dollars for flood control, thirty-three million dollars for Lewis and Clark, and twenty-seven million dollars for railroad relocation. Revenue. This is such a key topic when it comes to government, whether it be city government, state government, or federal government. The primary source of revenue for Sioux Falls are sales taxes and their property taxes. In fact, you're going to see that forty-six percent of the revenues that come within our, to fund our budget, come from sales taxes and property taxes. A hundred and thirteen million dollars in sales taxes and fifty-one million dollars in property taxes. If the people of this town, the citizens, if they demand more services, they demand stronger infrastructure, and they demand a higher quality of life, we have to remember, council, the way that that happens is truly through growth, growth of sales taxes, growth of property taxes. I sincerely, I mean this, I've not heard a battle cry from anyone in town, not one single citizen, that has said, "Mayor, I wish Sioux Falls would do less." No one. Our citizens, they do value good service. Our employees, again, they're in the service industry, and they make up the largest chunk of the budget, as you can see with the chart above, twenty-nine percent of the taxpayer dollars going to people. Other operating expenses such as materials, supplies, fuels, utilities, maintenance and repairs make up about ninety-five million dollars, and, of course, the capital budget that we talked about just a couple of weeks ago makes up about ninety million dollars. Let's get into the meat of the operating budget. One thing about this town, one thing about this city council, one thing about this finance team, is that we live within our means. In two thousand and thirteen, we had revenues of a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, and fourteen, we're going to have revenues of about a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. That's about a six percent change. In thirteen, when it came to the expenditures, about a hundred and thirty-three million dollars. The fourteen is about a hundred and forty million dollars, again, right around a six percent growth. Now, one thing that you do need to understand, and I want to make clear, is that we do care about the reserves, we do care about that piggy bank, but at the same time, we just don't want to let it sit there as well. If we're going to take the taxpayer dollar, we should utilize them as wisely as we possibly can, and we are going to recommend using three point eight million dollars of the fund balance in fourteen, just like we did in thirteen. Property tax revenues, again, they're looking good. We're growing, we're projecting a two point three percent year-over-year growth in terms of the property tax revenue. And then, sales tax revenues, we are projecting a five percent year-over-year increase when it comes to the two thousand and fourteen budget. Now, this is fair, and I can already hear it. Some of you may argue that the revenue projections are too conservative. However, conservative revenue projections, they keep us from repeating the mistakes of other public entities. It's served us well in Sioux Falls, and, yes, it is serving us well in South Dakota as The spending within the budget council, it's going to reflect what we believe are the priorities of the people that we serve. Public safety is the primary focus, with about thirty-eight percent of these dollars going to public safety, a little over fifty-three million dollars. Then you go to streets and parks, which make up about twenty-eight percent, and then on down the line. Of course, this is the operating budget. When it comes to the capital budget, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, it was streets and utility infrastructure that were ultimately the priority, and, of course, those parks as well. Sioux Falls, we are financially very, very solid, and we are becoming even stronger. The budget before you, they've had similar characteristics to the three budgets the team and I have presented in the years past. This fiscally conservative, common sense, and, yes, business-like approach has indeed served us well. City councils, our people are pleased. They are. Ninety-three percent believe that Sioux Falls is a good or an excellent place to live. Before I leave today, I want to leave you with one last thought. I want to leave the council and the people that we serve with one last thought, and I hope you'll appreciate it. For generations, we have been talking about how someday, wouldn't it be great if we created an environment where our kids and our grandkids would want to stay? That someday is now. Our kids and our grandkids are moving back to Sioux Falls. Better yet, they're deciding to stay. They're not even leaving. We're creating good jobs with solid benefits. We're capturing quality of life improvements that have just been long, long overdue, and we're making great things happen, and we're doing it while living within our means. Working together, we've made this a reality. The budget that we have proposed today and the investments that come with it, they will help ensure that we don't let this captured dream slip away. dream slip away. Council, thank you for your time today, people of Sioux Falls, thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel.
Move to adjourn.
Second Intiman. There's been a motion to adjourn by Counselor Mbak, it was seconded by Counselor Entiman. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City of Sioux Falls, this meeting is adjourned. Make it a great day.